Thank you. All right, welcome. It's Monday, December 11th. 1:04 PM in the afternoon. We're here for our weekly Board of Commissioners work session. I'm Gage Farrar. I'm joined with Commissioner Sharon Bollos, Commissioner Jim Harvey. We're in the start discussion this morning, looking for action or approval for the minutes held on December 4th, 2023.
So move, Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're now onto our agenda item two. Economic Development Update. With this, Ms. Stephanie Russell, Sean Wilkinson, Scott Park is not here. Scott Mendoza is here. Steph Ebert and Mr. Chris Crockett as well. So.
Yeah, this is kind of an end of the year, really quick update on some of the things that are happening, particularly in the West Weaver corridor. So I've got a couple of members from our team, our development team here and our Ednum Development Finance Committee. So right now, we had the opportunity to meet with a majority of the property owners that are interested in creating a public infrastructure district. And these are the property owners that are south of the railroad. So their intent is to create this public infrastructure district that would address the sewer needs, the water needs, as well as the roads, including the potential for a bridge, either wherever that ends up kind of being decided. So we've started meeting with our teams just to get everyone on board, to see how this is going to play out and to see what entities would be involved. So this will be a rather large PID, but it could be very, very successful if leveraged in the right way to provide that infrastructure that's desperately needed in that area, particularly with the water in the sewer and the bridge. So I just want to make sure you guys knew that we had started having those discussions. They haven't officially submitted. They're in the process of potentially submitting in the next month. We have been discussing, we have met with them with, John Price is on here with LMSA. We'll have John Price pop in in just a second. John, did you catch the first part of that?
Yes, I did. Yep, I'm on.
Great. Feel free to jump in and add anything.
Welcome, John.
So one of the things that's been happening with LMSA also, to get you all up to speed on that. I think that's true.
That's where Grover is.
I was trying to. Scott is right down too.
Oh, that's right.
That's right.
He's going to be back.
Scott Park's there too. Oh, that's right. He got the, he got the plane ticket down.
Oh, yes. Caviar.
Yeah, tickets and was, did he get two nights or three nights rodeo?
I think two. I think they're on their way back today.
Oh, are they?
I think so.
Oh, yeah.
Either they're.
That's a pretty good deal. All right, John, sorry about that. We're back. You're the only one online. We went dead for a second.
Sorry, John, the computer just shut itself down. So.
That's right. I thought it was me first thing. I was trying to figure out what the heck I did wrong, but I.
It was us.
So we're next up on the infiltration project as well as the lagoon rehabilitation project. We'll be working with Sean's team, Jason Horn. We're running, because those are ARPA dollars, both the state and the county ARPA dollars, we have to go through the procurement process. So I'm working with them, putting the RFPs together and running those through the procurement process here at the county. Then we'll get those out and get those, those projects. I am anticipating we're going to get those projects up and running no later than April or May this year. So it'll probably take about a year to get both of those projects complete. So we'll have a functional system out there. And in the meantime, we've been doing some will serves. We've had about six will serves in the last, last three or four months that have wanted to connect into LMSA. So we did find out recently that with this new development coming online with the housing and John Price can talk a little bit about what that looks like. You guys have heard a little bit about it. And then they weren't able to secure water from Weaver West Warren. So John Price and I have been talking to Weaver Basin, and it looks like as of January, we're going to start the process to, for LMSA to become a water retailer. So not only will they have a sewer system, they'll also, they also legally buy their ordinance, creating ordinance can retail, can retail culinary water, stormwater and irrigation. So they have those, that opportunity to do that. So we're going to build that into the new model. As we're working on this PID, the PID will fund the infrastructure for retailing water and will fund the infrastructure and potentially the package facility to do sewer out there as well, in addition to the lagoon system. So John, you want to just give a little bit of a, kind of a summary of this development and what we're looking at? Just so the commission's aware of all the moving parts that are going into this. And they'll be, at some point, we'll bring the PID to you to look at. But I just wanted you guys to have a heads up about what's going on and all the meetings that are happening behind the scenes, so that you're aware that there's some significant development happening out in this corridor.
Yeah, so a meeting with the, with these developers, these big ones there on the, from the south side of the tracks. And they came and said, you know what? What if we, through our PID that we already doing, what if we put in a mechanical, you know, a mechanical site for you guys? And then as we talked more about, yeah, that'd be great. Obviously, we'd love that if you, if you could do that. And then as talks kind of progressed more, they said, well, how about water? You know, West Warren Water can be a little bit difficult to deal with. They don't really like the idea of growth. And so they kind of make it difficult. And so they said, what if, what if we put in the storage and all that for water? So we talked to Weaver Basin and they said, yeah, actually for residential especially, you know, we think that is definitely something we could do. We could do that if you had storage and, you know, these certain things that you'll need to be able to do that. And so went back to the developers and told them that we could do that. And as the more and more we kind of been working and the more we're seeing that we can kind of be all in one and take care of all the needs out there just through LMSA. So I think it'll be a good vehicle to solve some of the, the needs that we have out in that area for sure. And we also have, I don't know if you talked with Stephanie, but that student project that's helping design.
No, I haven't brought that up. Feel free to bring that up.
Yeah, you can give probably more details on it. But there's a, there's a student group that wants to design a system for us that, that will do whatever our needs are. So it'll be, you know, they'll design it for the reuse of the water, the whole, you know, the whole nine yards. And then, because they want to take it to competition. And we'd be able to get that design at no cost, you know, depending. And then we'd also run it through, you know, our own engineers and whatnot as well. But this is kind of a cool opportunity that came about to kind of help us, because we don't have the money to be paying for, you know, for all these things. And so that was a kind of a cool thing that came about as well. And Stephanie can probably touch more on what that, what that entails as well.
Yeah, so we were approached by a a professional who manages a college group that goes to competition every year on the state and then the national level. And they're going to, they volunteered to use LMSA as their guinea pig to do this design project. And I've also got them tied in with Q Energy. What we'd like to see as they're designing this, is that they build Q Energy into it. So we harvest methane out of the LMSA mechanical facility out of the gate, coming out of the gate, we'd harvest methane. Instead of flaring. So that'd be part of the design too, is to tie in Q Energy into that with, similar to what we're doing at the landfill. Just flaring, instead of flaring methane, we'd harvest methane at the wastewater facility. So we have some really great opportunities. We have some really great partners right now. John and I will be getting together with Weaver Basin. Hopefully we'll be coming to their board in the, in the next couple of months to talk about retailing and just really provide the infrastructure that's needed for, for all the development out there through the public infrastructure district mechanism, which we're really excited about. So that's mainly, I just wanted to get you guys up to speed on what we're doing and just to be aware that we'll be bringing things to the commission. But I made a promise to Sean and Gary last year that I would get the county out of the sewer business. And I have delivered on that.
Yeah.
I'm so close to delivering on that. But that, that's really, we want to set, we want to set a precedent and we want to set an example of how you create regional infrastructure by using public-private partnerships. And it doesn't, the burden, the cost of, the cost of this is not going to be assumed by the county. The cost is assumed by different entities partnering together to create this regional system. And that's something that is very important to Sean and I and that we've had a lot of discussion about internally. So.
That's great.
Anyway, just wanted to bring this to your attention and, and you know, feel free to ask the team any questions. It's, like I said, there's a lot of moving parts. But, and we couldn't do it without our, our development team. We could not do it without the development team. This is a, this is a joint effort. But I think in the next two years, we're going to see some pretty big successes environmentally, infrastructure, creating workforce housing, creating a nice environment out there to do some larger development projects. So we're really excited. That's my update. Any questions?
That's great. So have you had the conversation with Weaver Basin then?
Yes, we had an initial conversation. Yeah, John and I did, yes. And they're very open to this idea.
So will they be, can they supply it off their current line? Or I know there's plans for an additional storage as a contingent upon the additional line and storage.
No, that's a great, that is, yes, go ahead, John.
Well, as I said, yeah, so the, the current line, there's, there's room in the lines, he was saying. We would just definitely need to have storage. And he said that they could spot us for storage wise for a couple of years. You know, you go on to what they really liked was the residential plan for it. So that's, they were, they were kind of getting at us, saying, you know, res, we love the, you know, because we told him, hey, there could be a pretty big residential input there. And so that's what we kind of feel like we are, we are for, right? Like that's, that's what this water is for. So they were really big on, on that. And then, you know, through our facility, maybe create some reuse for some, some of the, maybe the industrial needs that are out there. But yeah, they were, they were very, very in favor of, especially our initial process of, of the residential use there. So we would, we'd be able to figure out some storage. We'll, we can figure that out through the developers, through West Warren Water maybe or, or our own, you know, so we'll, we'll figure out what avenue works best there. But they were, there wasn't they'd have the water, they have the capacity to, to deliver to us. So.
Well, that's, that's great. As you're probably aware, they're making a proposal second time to Sewer District tonight to basically set up another plan out there.
Yeah.
For take care of the affluent.
And he, he did say, Darren did say that, that this, the, he liked the housing component. He said that was very much in line with their master plan with this new facility.
For the new facility.
Yes. So he was very optimistic that we would get a good reception from the board when we go and present to the board. So.
Yeah, I think you will. And this is coming, this is being driven from state down. So.
Good.
I think they probably won't have too much of a problem.
Yeah. So we're excited. I just wanted you guys to be aware of what was happening and how we're getting some resolution on some of these issues out there and, and how we're utilizing our, our incentives and our, and our committees and our team in a very productive fashion.
You guys have done great work. This is, this is the area that needs to, where it needs to go for growth. So.
I think so. We're excited.
Questions, Commissioner Bollos?
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, great work, everybody. I'm excited to see this take place out there.
We are too.
You know, it's not going to happen overnight, but.
And I did schedule some time with us to talk to the railroad in the event that we, we need to do a crossing there too and put that into the PID. So decide, you know, we'll figure out where that crossing needs to be, but we want to keep all the options open. And, and we'll be meeting with the railroad in January. And you and Harvey got an invitation to that. So.
I thought I saw something come through.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Sharon, if you want to, if you want to get information, we can either do before, after, so we can keep it as a.
Is this part of the board or?
We're just going to meet with Nathan coming, and he wants to talk not just about the West Weaver corridor, but a couple of other projects in Weaver County. So it's with Nathan, our rep.
Yeah, got it. Okay.
All right. How wide's the little Weaver out there at 2550?
We could measure. I don't, I don't know.
Scott, you got a.
Just a measuring? I'm not sure.
The width of the waterway. But like Sean said, we could, that could be measured fairly.
We could pull it up on GeoGizmo and measure that right now.
Okay, no, it's okay. I just wonder. Trying to help these guys. There's maybe, you know, I like those ideas of bridges going across there. Some of these old farmers, you learn a lot from an old farmer in case you haven't been paying attention.
You do, yeah.
But if you could lay a couple of them black bed railcars across there.
Small for.
All it is is for emergency.
Oh, my goodness gracious. Okay.
It's not an engine bridge, but it's.
That's going to get permitted.
Yeah.
That's so funny.
Well, it's on private property.
Yeah, but we want, we want to create regional long-term sustainable infrastructure.
Way out of there.
We'll figure out how to, we'll figure out how to fund it and figure out where to put it. We'll be okay. So I do have a couple of grants out there still that we're waiting on. One of them is to do a stormwater plan for that area. And that's something that hopefully will get awarded and can work on that too. So there's all kinds of, all kinds of issues out there to deal with.
Yep. Find a way to say yes. All righty, anything else?
Yes. What we do.
Do you want to bring it up as part of this?
Sure, why not? Might as well. Sean and I received an email from the Inland Port.
Oh.
And they've been working on putting a project area plan, an expanded project area plan. And they wanted, their, their next meeting is January 10th. So they wanted to get before you guys before that. But that would be next week. So I don't know if we're ready.
We're here on the second, aren't we?
So.
For January two.
Well, they, they have to have a 10, a 10-day lead into their board. So they did run the initial expanded area by their board, by some of the board members. And Ben said that they had a favorable response to it. So just wanted to see where you guys were at with that.
So you say they did run it by their board?
They did run it by the board and it was basically, not officially, but just unofficially. And it, and it got really favorable response. If they could get it on their January 10th agenda to vote on, then they would be able to create that area around March. But in order to get it on the January 10th, they have to get, they have to have you guys approve it before it goes to their board. So officially goes to their board. They have to have it approved by you guys. So just kind of wanted to see where you guys were at with that.
Well, I haven't seen their new map.
Yeah, they would, they would present that next week if you guys were interested in seeing it.
Next Monday.
Next Monday.
In a work.
Probably wouldn't mind seeing it. Would you?
No, I, if they want, if we've got time next Monday.
Yeah, I can, I can, I'll get Kristi and we can get them on.
Which we probably could.
Yeah, just have you guys look at the project area and then that way you kind of get a feel for what they're asking and whether or not you want them to move forward with their board.
Has your committee looked at it? What's your recommendation?
Our committee, our committee really liked it. So.
Really?
Yeah, yeah.
It, it seems to make sense. If we're going to do it, to do it for that expanded area in one shot versus do it here and then over here. So that, that's what the committee thought.
Yeah, yeah.
Have you run the, has Scott Park run the numbers?
I'll get, I'll get with him when he gets back and we can have him touch base with you guys before Monday or have him do an update on Monday with all that. They've provided all of the absorption rates as well. So the, Inland Port has that part done. And I'll get that to you guys before Monday, if you, if you want to put them on the agenda.
All right. Well, that takes the control, it takes a lot of control from us and puts it in their hands.
Yeah.
Which I guess in my mind.
And one of the things that they did, Ben said was that whenever we put our agreements together, that we would have, we would still have that negotiating power. I mean, based on our agreement with them, statutorily, yes, they have all of the control. So that's something you would have to decide if you want to go down that direction. It also, it also mitigates us having to go to all the districts, which is a, is a pro. So it's kind of like, it's kind of a pro and a con. You have to decide what, you have to decide what you want. And it's a 25-year commitment. So that's, I think there's some pros and cons that still really need to be discussed.
Well, I just want to make sure, this is a Chris Crocker question. You know, they've made the an allegation or at least the promise that none of the funds that they receive would go to outside areas, stay in Weaver County.
Correct, yeah.
But I've also heard that that's not necessarily their long-term plan, is to consolidate at all into one pot of money that, that, that that board gets to decide where it goes. So unless we have
Yeah.
a pretty good sense, if we're going to do it, I want that money to stay in Weaver County.
Absolutely.
I don't want it to.
That makes people think.
County or.
Yeah.
Or Garfield County.
Or your friends, your friends in Box Elder.
Yeah.
Right.
Because I think this, in my opinion, has more opportunity to take off than Box Elder does. And in a certain extent, even Iron, Spanish Fork, maybe not, but.
Well, yeah, I mean, I will say, yeah, I would agree with you 100% on that, Gage, because we've spent the last four years laying a foundation out there.
Yeah.
And, and then once we get the, once we get the infrastructure pieces in, it's, it's a goldmine.
We've put a lot of money into that promotion.
Just in case you don't remember.
I remember it pretty well. Yeah.
So I, I, that would be Sean and I's recommendation is look at, look at the plan, do pros and cons and decide if we want to move forward or not.
And if you don't, that's, that's okay.
Yeah. Yeah. And, 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 yeah.
Okay. Well, let's have, come up and present. You know, I would like you guys to come up, the committee evaluated those pros and cons.
Okay.
You know, here's the positive side, here's the negative side.
Do that.
You know, you, I think the monetary, in my mind, is one of the big ones.
Yeah.
If we can tie their feet that, okay, guaranteed 100% stays in Weaver County.
Yeah, I'll go.
Several times when he was here. They, they said that, I mean, they were adamant that the money stays in the area. Whether or not they can put that in a contract, I don't know. But, but he did make that comment.
Well, that's why I say I've heard that verbally.
Yeah.
A couple of different times.
Yeah, we, we would have to put it into some sort of agreement. We'll have to confirm in the statute that the money will remain local in Weaver.
Okay.
So we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, I think that's really important. We clarify that.
Yeah, and I, and I don't disagree with that. But all it takes is one piece of legislation.
I was going to say, when's change of statute?
That's changes. Now, I don't, I don't know how that would impact potentially our agreements.
Well, we'll make sure, we'll, we'll take a look at what the statute says and then we'll see what kind of agreement we can come up with. And then we'll just advise the commission to see.
And I'm not talking about current statute. I'm talking about future statute.
Yeah.
That comes in and decides, okay, let's change the, let's change this ballgame up and we're going to now make it where we can take 10% or 15% from every county and put it into this. You know, and I'm, I'm probably jumping ahead, but I know how some of those people.
That's, those things happen like that all the time.
That's.
And maybe we could put provisions in an agreement where if state statute changes, where it's going to be needed elsewhere, that their agreement will terminate. Or we'll see.
Oh, that's not a bad idea.
I like that idea.
I actually like that idea a lot.
Yeah.
I love having a callback.
So I just want to make sure we're bulletproof there.
Okay. Yeah, we'll get that. I'll get them on the agenda and then we'll get you guys
Great.
project area and the pros and cons.
Perfect. Thanks very much. Looking forward to that.
Great. Wonderful.
Thanks, Steph.
You are welcome. Sorry I took a little too much time.
No, you're right on time.
Okay, I thought I had 15. All right.
No, you had a, you had a half hour.
Okay.
Left us with a minute.
There you go. Thank you, thank you.
Hey, Sean, you're up next with Bill and Chris is here.
Yes. Bill should be right up, but we can start with.
Go ahead.
Well, this will be a closed session.
Oh, yeah.
Motion to move to a closed session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're now in closed session. You want to grab that and we'll close that out? Not that anybody was listening other than John Price, so. Not that anybody was listening other than John Price, so.
What should we do either?
Yeah.
Alrighty. All right, we're back in regular session discussion regarding the amendments to the 2023 operating capital budget. With us is Ms. Stephanie Ebert. Stephanie, you're up.
Okay, so tomorrow during the commission meeting along with the 2024 operating budget for next year, Scott will be presenting and we will be having a public hearing on the last quarter's budget amendments for 2023 as well. So we've been processing and compiling the information for those end of year transactions to ensure that we don't go over budget on any of our funds. So with that, I have just a summary of what those last quarter budget changes are. And along, so included in this document are three budget changes that have come to us in this last week that still need to be approved by you. And I have those here in hard copy. They are the Health Department, the Transfer Station, and CSI. So I can answer any questions that you have regarding the budget amendments that have not been signed that are included in here or any of the other items that are on this list if you have questions.
Okay. Did Scott go through some of these with us last week? Are these all the new ones?
These are all new.
Okay, everything here is new.
Right.
Did you say those three are not on here?
They are included. So.
There you go, if you want to see the.
Well, I could like comment here.
Yeah, so most of them have already been signed and approved by you in either the KISFO system or on a hard copy document except for these three. These three again are included in these numbers.
Right.
But we just need to formalize that with a signature on it by.
So you need those three.
I need two of you to sign those three in order to include them in the public hearing tomorrow.
And that's it. What three of those again?
So the first two, Health Department with vouchers and the Health Department Environmental Health Grant.
Got it.
So that's two of them. We've got transportation disposal costs and crime scene investigations.
Got it. Okay.
You want me to just sign these?
Sure, yeah, if you would.
Okay.
So most of these, the first two with the Health Department, we're just receiving more revenue. And so in order to receive the revenue, we have to spend the dollars because they're reimbursements.
Right.
And so we're increasing the revenues and expenditures on both of those lines. And then the Transfer Station, same type of scenario. We have increased disposal costs, but with those increased disposal costs, we receive additional revenue. And then a lot of the Culture Parks and Rec departments have gone through their year end and said, we have this much more revenue, we have this much more in expenses. So those are on there. The CSI, they've experienced more overtime costs and a couple of benefit changes, individuals that have added to their insurance and so forth that were not budgeted for originally and as well as some additional vehicle costs and so forth. That's what that line is. And with the Health Department remodel, the last item, those were approved items that were approved in 2024. However, we've moved those expenses back to 2023 and removed them from the 2024 budget.
And that was, I'm assuming that was all part of the second floor.
Correct, right. In the annex, yeah.
The annex, yeah, yeah, got it. Okay.
So that's again, that's what you'll, you'll see in the public hearing tomorrow during your commission meeting. Scott will present this in a public hearing and this is the document that he'll be presenting.
Providing that he gets back in time.
As long as the. Yes, I will, yes. But I, I have good faith that the airplane will not crash.
He's on an airplane.
Well, you know, those type, those people that live that kind of lifestyle, they just, he may be halfway to Maui by now.
You never know.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a smaller plane. It holds 10 individuals plus the pilot and that's what's on that plane. So all his family.
So it's just all Scott's family? Wow.
Not the pilot, but the rest of them.
Neat.
Yeah.
That's quite an opportunity.
I'd say, you know.
All right, anything else, Steph?
Uh, not unless you have anything for me.
Questions for Steph?
Oh, no, I have none, no.
All right, great. We will look forward to hearing that in the morning.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, that's a lot easier than the poll system.
Yeah, expected. All right, that takes us to our 2:30, but it's only 2:05, so.
That was quick, four minutes.
Wow.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we do some sauntering.
Okay, how long?
Oh, till we are next appointment, which would be at the approximately 2:30.
Second, second.
All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
We're sauntering until the next appropriate meeting.
That was a beautiful motion.
I was ready to second it.
Just great. Awesome.
You know, the problem with sauntering, sauntering with the legislature versus here is let's honor for 15 minutes. So 45 minutes, we're still out waiting for the speaker or somebody. It's like, okay. Get me back on the floor so we can get some stuff done. All right.
All right.
We're joined by. If I can get that off. That's not going. Posted, stop it, no wonder. There we go. No. Better get Christie to. You want to tell Christie to get us back going?
Yep.
Those are Weber Basin apples.
Yeah.
They're good.
They are. They still got enough crisp in them.
Don't eat too many of those. You won't be able to enjoy your apple pie.
What I'm doing is I'm tuning up.
All right, I think we're set now. Thanks, Christie. All right, back to our two thirty presentation regarding social media policy. Jessica Clark and Brian Baron. Who's going to start here?
I'll take it away.
Go ahead, Brian.
Thanks. So as you probably know, the county already has a bunch of social media sites, but we really don't have any kind of a policy.
Yeah.
Stating who can start a new site or who's in charge of maintaining the sites or how to interact with the public on those sites. So Jessica and I have been working on this for the past couple of months. We, uh, sent out a rough draft to the different departments and they got back with us with their feedback. We made some changes and so now we're bringing it to you to see if you have any feedback.
Okay. So tell us what you want to do.
You want me to walk through the policy, kind of outline it for you or?
I don't know how much detail I need from it, but just kind of the highlights.
Yeah, I can give you a quick summary.
Just give me the summary. So what I mean is, you guys are the experts. I don't know much about what you're reading, so.
We decided to let each department or office. Control their own social media sites.
Okay.
And so they don't have to come to you for permission to start a new site. They can just do that internally. And there will be an individual designated within the department or office who manages the site. Let's see, any other highlights? Uh, there's a list of. On terms and conditions for public. They want to comment on social media sites. They have to abide by our terms and conditions. If they violate those terms and conditions, then we have procedures for first notifying them that they're in violation and giving them an opportunity to modify their comment. And if they don't. Then we can delete their comment. And if they continue to violate the terms and conditions. Then we can block them. And there is a provision in there that allows them to appeal to get their rights reinstated after a year.
In our two thirty session, we're joined by. If I can get that off. That's not going. Posted, stop it, no wonder.
There we go.
No. Better get Christie to. You want to tell Christie to get us back going?
Yep.
Those are Weber Basin apples.
Yeah.
They're good.
They are.
They still got enough crisp in them.
Don't eat too many of those, you won't be able to enjoy your apple pie.
No, what I'm doing is I'm tuning up.
Alright, I think we're set now, thanks Christie. Alright, back to our two thirty presentation regarding social media policy, Jessica Clark and Brian Baron. Who's gonna start here?
I'll take it away.
Go ahead, Brian.
Thanks. So, as you probably know, the county already has a bunch of social media sites, but we really don't have any kind of a policy.
Yeah.
Stating who can start a new site, or who's in charge of maintaining the sites, or how to interact with the public on those sites. So Jessica and I have been working on this for the past couple months. We sent out a rough draft to the different departments and they got back with us with their feedback. We made some changes and so now we're bringing it to you to see if you have any feedback.
Okay, so tell us what you want to do.
You want me to walk through the policy, kind of outline it for you, or?
I don't know how much detail I need from it, but just kind of the highlights.
Yeah, I can give you a quick summary.
Just give me the summary.
So what?
You guys are the experts, I don't know much about social media, so.
We decided to let each department or office control their own social media sites.
Okay.
And so they don't have to come to you for permission to start a new site, they can just do that internally. And there will be an individual designated within the department or office who manages the site. Let's see, any other highlights, uh, there's a list of. On terms and conditions for public, they want to comment on social media sites, they have to abide by our terms and conditions. If they violate those terms and conditions, then we have procedures for first notifying them that they're in violation and giving them an opportunity to modify their comment. And if they don't, then we can delete their comment, and if they continue to violate the terms and conditions. Then we can block them, and there is a provision in there that allows them to appeal to get their rights reinstated after a year. Some different things like that. Okay, any other highlights you think we ought to point out?
I don't think so, I think just the biggest thing is having a procedure in place for comments that are. That go against the policy, comments that are inappropriate, or have. Swearing, repetitive comments that are unrelated to the post, um, bot and spam comments. And so having a policy in place that specifically says what to do when that occurs will be very beneficial.
So those can be deleted? I don't, I don't remember seeing anything in here about being hidden. Do they miss it, or are those like bot comments and?
So we're hoping that bots will mostly be blocked automatically, there's.
We've had a few though.
Facebook moderation assist that we're hoping to utilize to help block them, but then we can't delete or hide them and that's under.
Oh, I see it. Yeah, okay, so my question is, when do you hide it, when do you delete it? And is there a legal requirement for keeping it on there?
That's a good question, maybe that's something that we clarified, but um. Usually, if I see something that is a bot or spam, I'll delete it and I'll report it to Facebook. But it's kind of depends on the situation, um, because the difference is when you hide a comment. Um, the person who made the comment doesn't see that you've hidden the comment, they can see their comment and so can their friends, right? No, they're, I don't think they're, I don't think they're friends, I think it's just the person who posted it. Uh, and maybe that's something, um, I need to double check on, um. But something if it's like a minor, like swearing, something like that, sometimes Facebook will automatically. Hide comments that have profanity and things like that. So I'd say the majority of the time comments are just hidden instead of deleted, um, but if I go in manually. Sometimes I will delete a comment that clearly violates. What we have in this policy.
Okay. Legally speaking, my only concern is that we have a record of what we're doing, so if we delete a comment. I want to be able to pull up the text of that comment at a later date if we're challenged on it. Or if we have to restore it at some point in the future, we need to be able to pull that out and say, this is why we deleted it, this is the language that was in there.
So basically, you're saying this policy covers us on that?
It does, it requires the authorized person in each department, before they hide or delete a comment, they have to document it. And that'll probably be done by taking a screenshot of it. Whether we hide it or delete it.
Okay. Alright. Questions, Commissioner Harvey?
No, thank you for your work.
Commissioner Bollos, this is your portfolio.
I just have one more, so, um.
I'm assuming you're.
I saw the reply, Jessica replied to me, Brian, I think she chatted with you about this, where did I put that? About turning off comments, you can't turn off comments once a. Post is made, can you, can you turn off comments right when the post is made, if it's something that you just, it's just informational?
Yeah, I would say before people start commenting on it, I think I'd be fine to turn off comments.
Just wondering if that would be appropriate, probably only. Maybe in a case of an emergency where we're trying to communicate information only. I could see that happening, you know what I mean, where you don't want all the banter back and forth about everyone's opinion on what's going on. If it's like an earthquake or something, right, we just want information only, that might be a time to just shut them off at the beginning.
Just don't allow it to come in.
Right, but I, but I get that if someone comments, you have to leave those on, you have to leave it open, if there are any comments.
I just think it gets risky if people start commenting on it and then we shut it off.
So I just want to make sure that somewhere in there, it allows us to shut them off initially. Because I think that might be beneficial in an emergency situation.
Yeah, and we can tweak that language, because right now it says that you can shut them off prior to.
Oh, it does say? Sorry.
But I like.
I'm sorry.
No, maybe we need to tweak it a little bit, so it says prior to or before, maybe prior to comments being made on the post, you can shut off comments.
Yeah, prior to comments being made. Does Facebook let you do that? Okay.
I mean, you. I don't know if it's simultaneous. Or maybe just right after you post it, anyway, that's the only thought I had is, in a situation where we don't really want. Where, where comments might make things more confusing.
Right, and, um. It differs between each platform, but I think typically when. Before posting, there is an option to delete comments. So I think just naturally, it's when it's posted. Um, but I'm sure there's a way to go back in before comments have been made and disable it.
Okay.
I think we'll probably be amending this a lot in the future.
Sure, at least we have it.
And we have so many departments doing different things, and so many different platforms that have different rules. So this is our best stab at it now, but we'll learn things over the next year, and we want to change it.
Yeah, I think it's great.
What we'd like to do at this point, I think, is take this policy and send it out to the departments one more time to get their approvals, any more feedback. And then we can put it on a county commission agenda.
What feedback did you get from them, did you make changes?
Yeah, we made quite a few, yeah.
What types of things?
I didn't bring my summary sheet, but, uh, one thing is, um, I sheet, they have volunteers who. Will stream games over the YouTube channel, and so they just wanted to be able to have that permission. Um, the. Conference center, was it, or somebody wanted to allow social influencers. To be able to take control of the social media site for a day, they said that drives a lot of traffic, if they have a popular person who is like making posts for a day. They want us permission for something along those lines. Um, we had elections that wanted to make sure that we had a provision in there that prevented electioneering. So some good feedback, things that we haven't thought of, that we didn't know were already going on in the county.
Good.
And so you didn't send it out one more time.
Yeah, yeah, to make sure they're happy with the changes that we made and make sure they haven't thought of anything else in the meantime.
I like it. Okay, Commissioner Bollos, anything else?
Nope.
You okay with this then? Okay. Appreciate, good work.
Thank you. I think there's a format that Park has asked us to use for new policies, I can get it from him.
I'll, I'll check with him on that, make sure it's in the right format.
And then, are, are you gonna do, are you guys gonna do a training with at the department head meetings or go after the different departments?
You know, that's a good idea. To have a department head training on this, Chris, just even, even over, because most of the department heads are not in charge of their social, they're not. Creators, but they're in charge of, and so it might be good. It might be good to bring them into it, I wouldn't mind seeing that in January, actually.
It'd be good.
That's not, I'm, I don't set the agenda for that meeting, that would be you on the second of January.
Really?
Okay, let's put it on then.
It's a good idea, there is a provision in the policy that allows for Jessica to provide training, uh, to different authorized personnel in each department. Um, but it would be good to get everybody trained on that upfront, since it's a new policy.
No, let's, let's do the training, and my question was, is how? How do you enforce it if somebody was to violate the policy, I mean, who, who looks after that to see? We put these rules in place, whose job is that to make sure people are living up to the rules?
You mean the public or our people?
No, our people, if somebody from our side. Is not following this, you know, we're, we don't have any control over the public, but.
You're gonna have two people, you're gonna have the department head.
Okay.
If something is brought to their attention, that their authorized person posted something against the policy, and then also Jessica will have the ability. Uh, to bring stuff to people's attention, and there is a provision that allows for discipline if people aren't abiding by the policy.
So, so that's even more reason to have the training with the department head, to say, look, your, your. Primary responsibility relies on you, I would say that, you know, Jessica would be number two in terms of that coming to.
Yeah.
So I like that. Good, okay, I like it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
And you have fifteen minutes.
Wow.
Jessica, can I ask if the Dropbox links still haven't, or they're not working yet?
No.
So what, is, is that our fault because we don't have enough capacity, is it password? Well, I wanted to ask that question, thank you, Chris.
I'm not sure, but I think it's from their end because it's, and it just says an error, Dropbox has an error, and so. I've asked them from their end to look into it, I've asked them to try a different way, and I don't think they've done any of that.
You have the Google Drive stuff, right? Are there things that you really need? That you're looking for? I mean, she doesn't know what's there, but I mean, she's working on the HR video that they did that has some. Redos, do you have that?
I have that, I don't have the editable file yet, which I'm trying to get. Um. State of the county, that's probably some footage that I would want.
Some B-roll you could use.
Um, round. I'm a little confused on what the status is there, but. Any footage they've shot from around.
Do you have an email chain back and forth with Sasha or with some of her people, or how is that working?
Yes, email chain.
Are you, and Sasha's, has she copied on every one of them?
She's not, it's mostly Shazin and Ally.
Just from now on, just deal with Sasha. Because if she's gonna, because what's happened is Sasha started. Do you CC Sasha?
On most of them.
I'm saying, I don't know if you can deal with her, because she doesn't, I don't think she has access or knows where these things are, I think her people do.
Yeah, but she can tell her people to get it done, because she keeps calling me and saying, I want my money, and I'm saying.
Sasha keeps calling?
Yeah, so I'm saying, you gotta get these things working, we've sent multiple emails, blah, 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 just work with, just say, this is. Sasha, I can't get this to work, it's been several weeks, I've tried to work with your people, I can't get it to work, I need this to work. I'm trying to get this closed out before the end of the year, and you can even say, we want to get you paid. We want, I don't want to put you in the middle of it by any means, but I, but by virtue of the position you hold to kind of, or are. Just say, this is what I need, and I would just start, and she can let her forward the emails. To whoever it is, because you're obviously not getting what you need.
Are you okay if I simultaneously get with Park and the other department heads as far as the invoicing to determine what the final amount would be?
Sure.
Just so we can get it done quickly when.
Intellectual property.
We were waiting to get all of our documents.
Wow, I don't think we are either.
But I can start working with Park to get the number to present to you.
Be good to get those.
We have another invoice, Jessica went over that.
For what, a more recent invoice?
Yeah, a whole bunch of stuff that Jessica went through it and found about what, three hundred fifty dollars worth of stuff that we really owe.
Really?
But it was for. What, twelve grand?
Twelve?
I don't know.
Are you kidding me?
Some duplicates and things like that, that I weren't sure. We'll talk about them in our staff meeting.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, but I think.
But there's another invoice, I think the sheriff has his last invoice.
Okay, we'll start gathering them all so you can.
Yeah, that'd be great, so we can see that final number and what goes into it.
I'd like to have that solved by the end of the year.
That's why I called you that day about that, you know, I just.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it and we'll bring some numbers for you.
Good.
Thanks, Jessica.
Mm-hmm.
Hmm.
Had what from the news?
Which one?
Oh, really?
Well, you know. Yeah, you're talking about, but yeah, we've had multiple. So I mean.
Yeah, this was just like. Nine or two ago.
Yeah.
Seems like you got a lot of those anymore. I don't know what they're thinking, but. Let's stop.
They weren't thinking, that's for sure.
They're not using much of their brain, are they? All right, Sheriff, welcome. We're here for our three o'clock sheriff's o- office update. We got with us Sheriff Arbonne Chief and our animal control. Folks are here with us today. So go ahead. Whoever wants to start.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate your time. All those that are here. I'll let Chief Perry go first and then I have a few things. Okay, Chief.
Thank you. Chad, if you're okay, I'll start this off and then we'll jump in. So we are, we are proposing a change. To the animal control ordinance. We've been working with Liam in legal on this for, for, for a little while. For several weeks and this kind of comes on the heels of. Uh, an animal control case we had back in July on a bite. That continues to kind of stay in the news, the, the individual that was. Go ahead.
Plain City.
Yeah, Plain City, yep.
Yeah, this is one you know.
And so we, we started looking into the actual ordinance and realized, uh, as Chad and I discussed this, that it needed to be cleaned up a little bit just to help with the confusion. Uh, the way the old ordinance was written. So I gave you a, I'll give you a little bit of summary and then I have a draft of the new ordinance as well. So you can look at. So I'll just go over some of the bullet points of what this changes. When you look at the, when, when you go through the old ordinance. It left a lot of discretion, a lot of discretion, and in my opinion, too much on the officer. There was a lot of may language, uh, about when you impound and when you. Uh, seek a court order to have that dangerous, potentially dangerous animal or vicious animal. Uh, euthanized or, um, abated. Um, and so there was some confusion and there was, there's even the way it was written is, uh, everything was lumped together. Uh, you have. You have nuisance animals that can be, um, that, that can be, uh, usually a nuisance animal is a barking dog, uh, bad odor. You know, those kinds of things nuisance, but not necessarily violent, right? There's a difference there, but we had lumped, the ordinance had lumped in. All the violence ordinances or the violent animals into the nuisance ordinance. And then the language on abatement was may, you, you may. You may impound, you may, you may abate, but, but you don't have to. So what this basically does. Is it takes, it removes the potentially dangerous and dangerous animals. From the definition of nuisance animals and it separates those out. So you have nuisance animals that would be, you know, your barking dogs, your, your foul odor. Those kind of things.
And the language with that is still may, may, may.
Correct. So, so you may abate the nuisance animals, but when you get into, and actually the potential da- potentially dangerous animals. You may abate as well. It's not shall. And I've included in the summary, I've included the definition of potentially dangerous and dangerous. So you can kind of see the definition. The difference, but the, but the dangerous animal. The definition of a dangerous animal means any animal that according to the records, the animal control or any other enforcement animal control agency has inflicted a serious bite or injury on a human being. Without a rip or with, with or without provocation. On public or pri- private property has killed the domestic animal with or without provocation while. Off the owner's property causes animal to be euthanized due to injury inflicted by said animal. Or has previously been found to be a potentially dangerous animal is provided herein. Uh, and subsequently aggressively bites attacks or endangers the safety of a human or domestic animal, or has been found to be in violation of any of the restrictions placed on them. By animal control. So the new ordinance will take a dangerous animal and on the abatement of, it creates a separate ordinance for the abatement of a dangerous a- animal. And then clarifies the language in there that animal control officer shall impound and then shall abate. By trying to get consent, uh, by, by the owner to, to relinquish, give up the animal. If not, then they will seek a court order. Um, to have the dog abated in. Under the, under the nuisance animal, one of the options to bait an animal is to relocate it. But the potential we see with that is if you take a dangerous animal. That has a propensity to already bite, you're not really solving the problem by letting it. Move to Box Elder County or, or move to Davis County, right? So, so this is gonna str- this is gonna tighten up that ordinance. And if you have an animal that an animal control officer believes is a dangerous animal, then they shall. Impound and then shall abate. Ultimately, it's the judge. If, if, if the animal owner doesn't want to consent, then, then it will have, you'll have to seek a, a court order, which is the way it's set up now. It's just clearing up that language for a dangerous animal. That you shall abate. That way, and you can't relocate a dangerous animal. It, it will be euth- euthanasia will be the only option. The other thing that it does is it removes. The definition and anything to do with, uh, vicious animals. We have, we have a definition of, of. Potentially dangerous animal, dangerous animal, no way vicious animal. And if you look at, at that first page of notes, a vicious animal means a dangerous animal or potentially dangerous animal. That prevents a continued threat to the safety of a person, property or other animal. We don't think that it's necessary to have that in there because we're going to be taking a stronger stance on a dangerous animal. If you have an animal that unprovoked. Bites a human being, causes serious injury, why are, why are we, why do we have that extra? You know, it just, it feels like, oh, we'll give you another chance. We'll give you, we'll give you another chance. Um, so we're going to remove vicious animal. It's not necessary because. You've, because we're taking a stronger stance in, in the dangerous. Animal category and then, um. And the, the last section, that last bullet point on that summary page. We're, we're removing that section six five five. And I think this just, I think this goes to show. Kind of the issue with the way that it was, that was previously written. When you read through that, it says. Understanding, I already went through the vicious animal definition. When you read through that, uh, section six five five. Is declaration disposal of vicious vicious animal. If an animal control officer finds that. An animal to be a vicious animal, the officer may. Again, may immediately take possession or imp- and impound the animal, place the animal in proper quarantine holding facility, seek written consent. To have the animal destroyed or seek a court order to have it destroyed. And, and I think that's where a lot of the confusion gets, and frankly, a lot of the frustration with the citizens, specifically to this Plain City case. Is, uh, you know, they, you know, I watched the most recent news report, uh, with this individual. It was just what, last month? And, and these animals were relocated out of the state and that was, that was his comment is he just doesn't, he doesn't feel like it's. It does not. Like you, you're, you're taking this, you know, you're taking an animal that's dangerous that has bit somebody and, and we're just relocating them. So I think. I think this will go, like we all agree that this will, this. This is, this is a, a needed change.
Clears up some confusion.
And ultimately in these cases, the judge is going to be the one, you know, unless they, you know, they, they have every right to say, no, I refuse. And then you seek the court order and put it in the, in the. You know, put it in the court and make that decision.
It takes a lot of responsibility off me as the director as well. And I can just go specifically to the statute and say, this has been deemed as a dangerous animal. Is needs to be either euthanized or, you know, court order saying otherwise.
Yeah.
So there's no may or yeah, there's stipulations to that. It gets rid of all. So it's not so convoluted.
This looks, you know, at first glance, looks great. Yeah. You, and your officers need the ability to not sit there and get pushed back, you know? From, uh, somebody's got a dangerous animal, you can't take it and they're looking at, well, I may do it. So this. Gives them the ability to say, look, I don't have a choice.
Right.
Here's what it says. It's dangerous. The animal goes.
And one of the complaints in this Plain City case was that under the old ordinance, you could, you could do the quarantine in the house initially, right?
Yeah.
So you do that quarantine initially in the house and then the neighbors are upset that have just gone through this traumatic event and they're like, man, like. Like, uh, my kids are out there. You're just quarantining in the house. So this, this now. Strike that and tells the animal control officer, no, if you respond to a call involving a potentially dangerous or dangerous animal, you shall. Impound the animal and then we'll make a decision. If it's potentially dangerous, then you may abate. You can go a different way. If it's a dangerous animal, then you shall abate following these, these. So.
My one question. You talked about if provoked. I mean, that's gonna, if the word provoked. Uh, in my mind. Is up to. Well, when was he really, uh?
With, with or without provocation. So it really is a. Like that definition where we talked about the provocation says with or without. So either way, so you don't really have to, you don't really have to establish the provocation. Because it says. A dangerous animal is an animal that's inflicted a serious bite or injury on a human being with or without provocation.
Yeah. I can see that. I mean, as much as I like this, I can see the other side where somebody comes up and just. Starts beating on another person or beating on a. A dog or something and they, and then he's, the dog's on leash and. You know what I mean? And everything's good, but all of a sudden you get a whack job.
Yeah. So to that point. If I can address that. So to that point, I think. I'll answer that with, there's two points, two parts to this answer. One is I think again, that's why we go back to a court order. So, so it's not saying that the animal is going to be put down. It says that the animal control officer shall. Ask for consent to have the animal put down. And if they don't give consent. Then we'll seek a court order. And then at that point it goes through a hearing. It's just like any other kind of. Criminal case where the general control officer will come, they'll put on their, they'll put on their statement, the prosecutor will put on their case. The defense will then put on their case and the judge will ultimately make the decision. So there is a, you know, the concern I think is, is. To your point, I think the one, the one downside to that is then if, if the owner, the owner would ultimately be responsible for those impound fees. So if they go through that process. The, the animal is impounded through that process and then the judge sides with the animal owner and says, no, we're not, we're not going to have this animal put down. The animal owner still. Uh. Responsible for, for fees, but those could be waived on a case by case basis. So I still think it allows. Um, I still, I still think it finds a good balance. The other, the other thing is that's, that's why I think to your point, Commissioner, that's why we left. A potentially dangerous animal. We left under the may section. And not the shall, because if you look at the definition for a potentially dangerous animal, it means any animal that with or without provocation. Chases or approaches a person upon the streets. chases or approaches a person upon the streets, sidewalks, or any public grounds in a threatening or menacing fashion or apparent attitude of attack uh or any animal with known propensity, tendency or disposition to attack with or without provocation. So we've separated those out. I mean, I'm, I own a German shepherd and and he's a, he's a pushover. But he's a hundred and fifteen pounds and he looks really mean. And then he runs at you to play. If you don't know him, people are gonna think oh, he's coming at me and attack. Well, no, he's not. Like, he's never, he's just, he's just not that nature. But that's why we separated out those two potentially and.
So a question for you. Chad will know this. So our situation we had in Harrisville, under the nuisance animals, does, would this apply in that case?
In Harrisville, I'm not sure.
The one with the horses?
The horses, that would be considered a nuisance.
Okay, cuz I, uh again, you've got nuisance animals. I don't want this interpreted just so that it's a dog or whatever, because we've had situations where one in Harrisville was a really an abuse of animals. Uh but the owner was, you know, not feeding him, no water, had dead animals on site. Oh, yeah, um you know, caused a, caused a real storm out.
Under the definition of animal and animals and the definition under that section describes any livestock, domestic livestock, cattle, things like that.
We actually, as we went through the drafts on this, I noticed one of the mistakes I was making is because I was focused kind of one specific case. I was unintentionally changing language to dog versus animals and had to go back several times and reverse that, say, no, we've gotta keep the language broad to to animals.
I did, I just wanna make sure that it was kept because we're seeing more and more of that and especially with hay prices and where they go.
So if you look at the, if you look at the first page on draft, the nuisance, the nuisance animal, and this is, this is currently in the ordinance, uh just to broaden the definition, is it a nuisance animal, causes damage to the property of anyone other than its owner, causes unreasonable odor, is in unsanitary condition in its being or habitat, is diseased, is in heat and uncontrolled, makes unreasonable barking, whining, howling or disturbing noises, chases vehicles, people or livestock or has previously been found at large by animal control on three separate occasions within the twelve month period. And that's any animal, not specific to dogs.
So legal thinks that covers this for livestock?
Yes, yes, cuz it covers it under the definition of animal. So and then under that is livestock. It has that definition over there. Domesticated animal or livestock, cattle, pigs, goats, things like that in nature. So in that case, in the Harrisville case, when it's causing odor or, you know, uh being unsanitary that falls under that nuisance. For for the animals, for the donkeys and that and the overseas.
I just want, I wonder if we couldn't put a provision there directed toward livestock dealing with condit- health or condition, rather than, I mean, unsanitary, unsanitary conditions I, you know, are kind of, is kind of subjective. But if, I think if we put a clause in there in which I think the state relies upon that if a independent vet determines that the animal is not of healthy condition because of food or whatever, that should be a, that should be a condition.
Yeah, and we do, it does follow under um the animal cruelty section. It does cover that and that's what we cited, initially cited her for was animal cruelty. It's a more, it's a more specific section than just nuisance. Nuisance is like a class.
Okay, so we, so cruel, the section under animal cruelty, which okay, alright, good. Alright. So what else, Sheriff?
Yeah, unless there's any other questions, we'll, we'll be moving forward with this.
Yeah, good. This is great. Yeah, it looks like you've done your homework on that.
Yeah, we're um, it's, I s- I think we're close to having, we're just making some final grammatical critiques, but the content, so the content shouldn't change from the draft that you have. We're just kind of cleaning it up and 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 putting the finishing touches on it and then I'll get it in the contract system or in, I'll get it in the system to to move forward for commission to put on the agenda.
Perfect. Okay. I like it. Com- Commissioner Bolos, any questions to come? Yeah, I I appreciate you taking a look at this because more and more, we're seeing these attacks and you know, unruly dogs and.
And Chad's been really in the Plain City case. Chad's been really good. He's been out there working with them and and uh and yeah, as we kind of looked at it, that that latest news story, I was like, man, I there's something we need to do more. So we started reviewing the actual ordinance and it just, just seemed too vague to me. It just seemed too general.
Yeah, good form. Yeah. Yeah, if you want people to do, you don't put in a may, put in a shall. Okay, what else, Sheriff?
Uh Vital Core, as you guys.
Thanks, Chad.
As you guys know, in the last meeting, we talked about Vital Core, uh that was the uh mental health. Uh Alpha Counseling drifted, got really weird. I I didn't know it got this bad until the last couple of months. And so they're just kind of going out. Uh so uh Vital Core is uh stepping in to cover that. That should be, we've been working with Brian Baron on that quite some time, so it should be in your queue to review. Uh Logan City uh bought a canine, uh very nice canine, about fourteen grand, fifteen grand. And for some reason, it didn't work out for them. So our canine guys checked it out and we are buying it, or we did buy it for four grand. So we're gonna have
Save some money.
Five or six dogs now. And we're thinking about uh creating a uh canine bureau, or if you will, our own little canine group to, rather than the dogs being assigned to a crew, they'll be assigned to Imes, which I believe is more effective for canine deployment. And not the way we're centered though, that'll stay the way it is. So yeah, nice dog, dual purpose.
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, so bite dog and drug dog. And the dog's original name was Redo.
Redo?
Yeah, sorry. I think they're changing that.
We've got a really good group of canine handlers that have a lot of experience. I don't, I don't I don't think this dog has any issues. I just think when you have, I don't know, why it didn't work out for the other agency, but.
Part was the handler.
Speculate, not, not having worked a police dog, but having worked search and rescue dogs, I would have to assume that from my experience, what I've seen, it's generally a handler issue.
Yeah, when you spend fifteen grand for a dog, these uh institutions put out good dogs.
Yeah, I would think that's probably true.
Yeah, so this will be a nice addition to the sheriff's office.
Does he have a new name?
We'll have a new name. We don't know what it is yet.
It won't be redo.
I wanna name the dog.
Submit it to guard.
Okay, I will. Yeah, I'm afraid of that.
And then uh the next last thing uh is our party, as you guys know, is this Friday. I hope you can all make it from eleven to one.
That's always a good party.
Yeah, there's lots of people.
Is it a drop in?
Drop in, yeah, eleven to one.
No entertainment? By you or the chiefs?
No, 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 no uh planned entertainment. Sometimes it just happens.
Could be spur of the moment, who knows?
True. And then I have some other things if uh that relate to other things. Going to closed session.
You want a closed session?
Yes. Property, personnel, yes.
We, did we have to notice this, Chris, or?
No, if, as long as we don't take action on it and we're under the sheriff's office updates and we just state the reason why we're going into closed session.
Okay, just about real estate purchase, et cetera?
Yes. And personnel matters as well.
For personnel matters, that one you don't have to report if it's strictly personnel. So we'd have to have um an affidavit signed afterwards. Yeah.
Make a motion to leave the meeting and go into a closed session for discussion of personnel and or property.
Well, thank you.
Keep joining us in our conversation.
This is the proud guest.
Oh, boy. Here we go.
All right, welcome. We're now at our 3:30 discussion regarding benefit broker. Emily Wilde, Katie O'Planus is here and Jason Horne.
Yes.
All right, tell us what we've got.
Okay, so we went out and, you know, put out an RFP for a benefit broker. And we did some in-person interviews and we have gone through and we think GBS is going to be the benefit broker for Weaver County moving forward. They can just do a lot for us. They have a lot more services. They can do videos. They can do, really help with a lot of employee communications, all of that that we're not currently getting with DIRK. And so we would like to propose moving forward with GBS. Now, I have there, and Katie, I don't know if you want to add anything, but as far as the rate goes too, so they are going to honor what DIRK already has set up for 2024. So there's not going to be any type of premium cost or anything like that budgetary change. And then '25 and '26, they actually kind of reduced theirs. It's based on the, they're going to take a little bit of a commission on the dental and the standard and no commission on medical. So it actually comes through the premiums, not through, like Weaver County paying them the amount. So, and I have these if you want to look at them as far as the next three.
So you did, you put out the RFP.
Right.
For this?
Yes.
And is this an annual contract or?
No, this one, we'll go through five years, Katie.
It'll be three.
Three with the option to renew for two, right?
Five years.
What was our previous contract?
So right now with DIRK, how it's set up, so he was doing .5 commission rate for medical, 1% for dental and 10% for, I think they matched what we're doing for DIRK right now. And then-
In 2024.
In 2024. So this is what we're paying for DIRK 2024. And then it actually, in 2025, they're taking a zero commitment.
Wow, that reduces it quite a bit.
And, and the hope is maybe, you know, maybe they can help renegotiate premiums a little bit for 2025 because there's not a commission built into that. I mean, who knows?
I like the $67,000 savings.
Yeah, and, and we can get, I think, some of the things that we're missing from DIRK, some of the support that we need. That they're just, I mean DIRK is great and, and he's done a lot for us, but he's a, they just don't have the capacity to, to meet the needs like GBS. They've got a whole team. We would have an account manager dedicated to Weaver County. Like I said, they would help with all of the communication guides. They'll come in and even do, like, open enrollments. They'll come in and do new hire orientations. They'll really help us communicate better to the employees what, what all of their benefits are. You know, they, they have a lot of help with wellness, resources, all of those kinds of things. So right now we're trying to do it all and so GBS will come in and help do all of that for us.
Who is GBS?
Um, they are, it's a Levitt group, so-
Oh, okay.
They're, they're a broker and they're-
Salt Lake based?
Salt Lake based, yeah.
I believe they're national.
Well, the Levitt group is national, but GBS, the group that we have is local.
Yeah, okay, got it.
Yeah, and they have a lot of counties and cities throughout all of Louisiana. So they're very familiar with the public sector. I can't remember some of their clients. We called some of them.
I believe Davis is one.
Davis County.
Is Davis County using these guys?
I believe so. I believe it's Davis County, so.
Well, Commissioner Bolus is in your portfolio.
We won't, me, I'm good with it. Kind of a no-brainer, isn't it?
Well, that's, that's kind of where I was headed, but unless you add some information that we're not provided.
So we don't have a, a current contractual obligation with DIRK into the next year?
So this was actually originally started when Sarah was still here. And the decision was made after seeing the information that was disclosed, that the county was in a position to go with something new at that time. So we stayed with DIRK because he was already integrated, kind of built into the system. But then Emily and Katie came and said, "Look, we're at the point where we have, we have to make a change." And so we went out, and I was just going to say that, you know, same with, with the other RFPs that Emily has done. Both her and Katie are super, super thorough. So when they come with this kind of information, they've done the work. There are long haul flights to Asia, Australia, New Zealand, places like that. When I do an RFP for them, it's a long haul RFP. It's going to take some time, but it's going to be done correct. So Katie actually ran point on this project and was every bit as thorough as Emily has been with some of the past RFPs. So it is absolutely correct. And I think it took them a few days just to make the decision because the top three, any one of them could have done the job and done a great job. They were very qualified, but they went with, with who was going to be the best match for the county and give us the, the best savings. So does that answer your question as far as-
So we just don't have a, DIRK's not under contract for 2024?
Correct?
Yeah.
He's not?
No.
Yeah.
Then we're good.
Okay, Commissioner Harvick.
Boy, I got a strong relationship with the guys.
I was going to say, you're going to struggle with that.
Yeah, so I'm super struggling with that, but 60, my, my, uh, my problem with GBS from years and years ago is they're the bad folks. Get in the door with one price and then raise it, raise it, raise it. But this right here takes away my arc.
Very, very good, yeah. It's a three-year contract, right?
It's $130,000 savings.
When I met with these brokers, or when we met with the brokers, I should say, that was one of the questions that I asked. I didn't want to be surprised in three years, a huge hike in their cost. And all of them agreed that we would like to have like a longer term relationship instead of doing this more often than we have to. And so they, I guess, sort of verbally promised that that's not going to be the case.
Okay, well, contractually, we'll make sure that that sticks.
Contractually, it will have three years.
It's a three-year contract.
Three years.
At that point, if we-
Wait, yeah, the option, yeah, the option to renew for two more years. So at that point, when it comes to 2026, like, we would renew if you gave us that same rate, so.
That's up to you guys.
Yeah.
And if not, then we go out again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, and I know the relationship you have and, you know, I-
I mean DIRK has been amazing. He's really good.
He's a great guy. You know, I have no objection, but that's, that's an amount of money.
$135,000 over the next two years is a lot of money buying the business.
Yeah.
And it's not that DIRK did anything wrong.
Right.
No.
DIRK did everything right. He just doesn't have the bandwidth-
Just doesn't have the-
-the growth of the county and employees and so forth.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we, you know, a couple of years ago, we needed a video. And then he reached out to GBS and GBS did the video. I think we paid for that video because he, he just doesn't have-
He just doesn't quite have the staff to do it. Some of these bigger players have, which is the hard part because we all love DIRK. It's going to be very difficult to change.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, it's hard to argue.
Hard to argue that. Facts are facts. So would this go into effect January 1st or what?
That's what we're hoping for.
That's why we're here today is because they want to try to get it on the next commission meeting, which is next week, right? And then are you planning on no commission meeting the 20-
6th?
6th?
Oh, no, we'll be there.
You sure? Because of the past.
Just kidding. I don't, unless there's something that, my plan is not to be here. Hopefully I'm somewhere, somewhere warm or somewhere with snow. So be next week. So I think you got to go.
Okay.
We'll be here on the second though as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
It honestly might be then because we've still got to get then the contract drawn up and we've got to- It honestly might be then because we've still got to get then the contract drawn up and we've got to send it over to your team. So it, it might be.
That's pushing you a little bit.
Yeah.
But you know, Chris will work on.
I'll be here on Sunday.
He'll be here. He'll be here on the 25th.
26th? Okay.
Just kidding. All right.
All right.
Thanks. Appreciate all you did.
Thank you.
I'm sure that was a lot of work and, but for the interest of the county for that hundred and some odd thousand, that's something we need to do.
Well, I'm hoping it will be worth more than just the, the monetary value.
Yeah.
I'm hoping that the service will really give the employees what they need and are looking for and something that we just don't have the bandwidth either to provide. So.
That's what I'd like to hear on occasion is just, okay, you know, maybe a quarterly update.
Yeah.
As far as, okay, you know, are they performing like, are they giving you the extras that you thought you were going to get?
Yeah.
I mean, we know we've got the dollars, but there's the other side of the coin too.
Yeah.
Good job.
Do that. Thank you.
Kate did a great job. Emily, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now Harv.
Motion to adjourn.
Is your opportunity. All those in favor, undebatable, we're adjourned.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.